The lion sees shadows, the canyon seems wide, will never be shy beyond the kingdom. Here my heart lives to be in far away to be home. There's blue star with skies where love and joy meet. Here my heart lives to be in far away to be home. There's blue star with skies where love and joy meet.
Provincial Vice Governor Clive De Kineu absent, we then approve leave, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, there are twelve out of fifteen members of this honorable body, there is a quorum.
Proceeding to the approval of a leader business, Mr. Chairman, this includes diminished our previous regular session. For now, Mr. Chairman, we have thirty items for the questioning. Eighteen items for second reading, one, three items under the question hour. One item that defines business, two items under the other communication.
Item number fourteen, this will be referred to the Committee on Youth, Sport Development, and on Rules and Privileges. From items number fifteen to thirty, Honorable Presiding Officer, This will be transferred to the new business for the day. And this will be marked as item number twenty six to forty one. In our addendum one, Mr. Chairman, items number thirty one and thirty two, This will be incorporated to the main other communication. And this will be marked as items number three and four. So moving for the approval as enumerated, Mr. Chair.
Second, motion is approved.
Honorable... Presiding Officer, we will now proceed to the question hour. Actually, Mr. Chairman, we have three items under the question hour. But I think DPWHs... They are not allowed. And they are preparing actually for the documentation as... Another, a letter. Dear Attorney, actually, he didn't read. This is a letter coming from the Department of Public Works and Highway Regional Office Region Ten. Mr. Chairman, and this is dated June two, twenty twenty five. Secretaries Sangkunian Paluwigan, Malay Balai City, Bukinon. Eight seven zero zero, Attorney Apolo Maguali, Dear Attorney Maguali. This is to acknowledge the receipt of your letter dated May seven, twenty twenty five, Inviting this office to the one hundred fortyth regular session of the twenty seventh Sangkunian Paluwigan To be held June three, twenty twenty five, Tuesday at the Sangkunian Paluwigan Session Hall, Legislative Building, Provincial Capital Malay Balai City, Bukinon, For the discussion of the conditional implementation projects As stipulated in the General Appropriation Act for fiscal year twenty twenty five. We respectfully request that the schedule be moved to Tuesday, June ten, twenty twenty five, To allow this office sufficient time To consolidate all the relevant documents required from this office during the previous session And ensure a substantive and informed discussion. Your continued support in the government endeavor would be deeply appreciated. Truly yours, Signed, Regional Director, Regional Office Ten, Delibet, and Apparicio. So I think it will be moved, Mr. Chairman, based on our request of the next session.
Next session.
Yeah. So I think we have only two invited guests to be here today, Mr. Chairman. And we have here our provincial health officer, the provincial health office of this province, Doctor Gary Guido C. Tabios. And also our provincial planning development office engineer, Dr. Magobat, To shed light on the matter regarding on the PAX plan, Mr. Chair. So may we have first, Mr. Chairman...
Suspend.
Yeah. Our provincial health officer for this question hour, Mr. Chairman. Does I move to suspend our internal house role to accommodate our invited guest, Mr. Chair.
House role is suspended.
And may we now request, Honorable Presiding Officer, Our provincial health officer, Doctor Guido Tabios, to update us regarding on the... On the impacts in our province, Mr. Chairman.
Doctor Tabios is recognized.
Mike, Mike test. Mike test. Okay, good afternoon and good afternoon to the members of this August body. Allows me to give you an update regarding the monkeypox. As sa first slide, it was mentioned it's an emerging threat. But it's a re-emerging infection. So next slide, please. As of August fourteen of the last year, WHO declared M-Pax outbreak A public health emergency of international concern. And then, the same date, after five days, the Philippines detected a case of M-Pax. And since then, after five to six days, The Secretary of Health announced ten cases of M-Pax, Which belongs to the CLAD II, or Kanin CLAD, it's a group. There are two groups, man, so it belongs to the CLAD II. So a certain part of Africa, the Democratic Republic of Congo, Reported fifteen thousand six hundred cases. Out of the fifteen thousand six hundred cases, They recorded around five hundred thirty seven deaths in twenty twenty four. This belong to the first CLAD or CLAD I, Group I. So what was detected in the Philippines belongs to CLAD II. But of all, in Democratic Republic of Congo, it belongs to CLAD I. So next slide, please. So this is just the distribution of the canal cases. So in Mindanao, I... In Mindanao, in South Cotabato, Munishe Pinakadalag cases, ten, Followed by Sultan Kudarat, Magindanau, San Buangka, Andavo, Rijon. I think there was also a case in Kagayandi, or Walang Napil, sa case count. And then there were various Kanang advisory. And then napoy mga series of advisories put from local health offices coming from these provinces. So what happened last week, Mr. Chair, is that There were a series of advisories which probably caused some panic. Can a sunod-sunod mga ng advisory coming from neighboring provinces. However, according to DUH, ang case counts for M-Pax Is lower for the month of May compared to the month of April. So mahulog siya na kung nagpanic manggani ang katawan. Ideally, nagpanic siya the month before. But nagpanic mangyutake because of the series of advisory. So next slide, please. So M-Pax is caused by monkeypox virus, part of the genus Orthopox virus in Pox beridae family. So it's the same family. Kapamilya niya ang smallpox, cowpox, o vaccinia. But dili niya kapamilya si chickenpox. So it belongs to another type of family. Virus giapun siya pero dili siya kalinya. So M-Pax is also a zoonotic disease, meaning to say the disease can be transmitted from animal, Then paingon siya sa human. It is endemic in parts of Central and West Africa, as mentioned awal ago, na sa Democratic Republic of Congo. The virus that causes M-Pax has been found in small rodents. Munay siya ang mga suspected reservoir na lugar diya ang virus. Small rodents, monkeys, and other mammals that live in these areas. So again, ako ning na mention ganyan ay CLAD I or Group I and Group II. And then you have a sub-CLADs or sub-variants. So CLAD I A, CLAD I I B, CLAD II A, CLAD II B. So CLAD A, M-Pax is generally associated with higher CFR, so case fatality rate. So kung nakai one hundred cases, one point four to ten kabugani katao pwidi mamatay. Munay siya ang meaning sa case fatality rate. Compared to the CLAD II, which has a lower case fatality rate. So it will only reach from less than one percent to three point six percent. So CLAD II was behind the global M-Pax outbreak that began in twenty twenty two. And the one that was detected in the Philippines. So next slide. So actually, distribution, and ano, so next slide. So incubation period, meaning to say by the time na nenter ang body sa... Salawa sa tao, then nagdevelop siyang symptoms, more range siya three to seventeen days. And then the duration is two to four weeks, two to four weeks. And then it might present as a rash, and then associated by a fever, Lusai, lusais, swollen lymph nodes, headache, labad sa ulo, muscle aches, or myalgia. Sakit ang... Back pain, sore throat, and low energy or asthnia. Next slide, so the fever can last for one to four days, and then rash appears shortly after the prodrome. So develop anywhere in the body, but most commonly sa lao, sa naonggao, and then The extremities, including the palms and the soles. And there's lesions in areas that begin simultaneously and involve together. So lesions are well-synchronized, moraglingin yut siya. Deep-seated and often umbilicated, na siya morag circle sa iang tunga. And then often painful, then become pruritic during the healing phase. So kanin siya differentiation lang na siya, no? But we are not advising the public to diagnose kay... I think this is for just comparison, and this is for the healthcare worker to know. So next slide, please. So actually, moro na siya differentiation, pero more or less, this should be the Job of the healthcare worker to differentiate the lesion. Dili siya trabaho sa osaka ordinary individual to diagnose. So underlying medical conditions, patients at risk with severe M-Pax, katung na IPLHIB, Diagnosed with HIV, those with primary immunodeficiency, na siya problema sila immune system. Those on immunosuppression, katung mga transplant patients. And then those patients with autoimmune disorders, and those with chemotherapy. And lesion on certain surfaces, the penile, foreskin, diuretral meatus, and vulvas. So kunay mga sama dito, ahm, dako ang risk na ma-transmit ang M-Pax. Okay, namansay break sa skin. And then history, botopic dermatitis, eczema, again breaks, manisa skin, and breaks in the dermal barrier. So kung may tag suspect case, is a close contact or probable or confirmed M-Pax case. So munay siya, munay siya itali in the next twenty... In the twenty-one days before onset, or signs or symptoms. So ang yaha ang mga sintomas niya, associated with fever, headache, myalgia, muscle ache, Back pain, and weakness, and fatigue. So a person presented with an unexplained acute skin rash, mucosal lesions, or lymphadenopathy, For which the common causes of acute rash do not explain the clinical picture. So pwidi na to siya itag as suspected case. So kung probable, a person presented with an unexplained acute skin rash, mucosal lesion, or lymphadenopathy. The skin rash may include single or multiple lesion in the anogenical region. Elsewhere in the body, mucosal lesions may include multiple oral, conjunctival, uretral, penile, vaginal. Anorectal lesions, anorectal lesions can also manifest as anorectal inflammation, pain, and/or bleeding. And then number two, one or two of the following epidemiologic link To a probable confirmed case of M-Pax in the next twenty-one days before symptom onset, Has had multiple sexual partners, two or more, in the next, in the twenty-one days before the onset of symptom. And then the most importantly, the confirmed case. So kanin siya, ang confirmed case is that a person with a laboratory confirmed M-Pax infection By detection of RT-PCR, so parehasan na yun sa katung COVID, or sequencing. And then close contact a person who, in the period beginning with the onset And source of the case for symptoms and ending when all scabs have fall off And a fresh layer of skin has formed underneath. As one of the following exposure, face-to-face exposure, meaning to say Wala nag sulobog face mask, wala nag sulobong mga PPE. So munay siya pasabot sa face-to-face. Kanamorag direct lang yut siya ba, nag-inatubagay. Pero this is in a healthcare setting, or this is in a household setting. Direct physical contact, including sexual contact, intimate contact na siya. Contact with contaminated materials such as clothing or bedding. So next slide, please. And then discarded case, katung mga suspect or probable case. Gitess siya by RT-PCR, pero mula na detect ang M-Pax virus. It could be another form of virus.